Okay, thank you, everyone. We're gonna call this meeting to order of the Sacramento City Council at 5:05 PM on May 2nd, 2023. If the clerk could please call the rule to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Laloie.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Maple.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Mayor Protem Vang.
Here.
For the record, Councilmember Telemantes and Mayor Steinberg will be absent, and Vice Mayor Guerra.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, let's see, who do we have signed up today to do the land acknowledgement and flags? If not, I'll look over, I'm looking at Councilmember Katie Valenzuela. Yeah, just because you were in my line of sight.
All right. No, I got you, that's okay. Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Putwan-Win Toon peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Now, please salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, everyone. Welcome, everyone. We're gonna get started here with some special presentations. May is Asian Pacific Islander American Heritage Month, and I am pleased to bring this over to present here, co-present with, and pass it over to Mayor Protem Vang to discuss our resolution and talk about these amazing contributions here today. Councilmember Vang, or Mayor Protem Vang.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor, and I will hand this mic back over to you, just to say a few words as well. Happy May, everyone, and happy Asian American Pacific Islander History Month. I'm really excited and proud to present a resolution that really centers and uplifts our incredibly diverse AAPI community, especially here in the city of Sacramento. This month commemorates the history, traditions, resiliency, our legacy, and the culture of Asian, Asian-Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islander across the United States, but right here in our city. Right here in our city, we are home to over 520,000 residents, with over 20% of those residents identifying as Asian American Pacific Islander and Native Hawaiians. And that includes over 6,000 AAPI small businesses here in the city. As I often share, our AAPI community is incredibly beautiful, diverse, complex. And tonight, alongside Vice Mayor Guerra, I would like to uplift two efforts and orgs in particular to really celebrate our diverse and beautiful community. The first is for the Sacramento Asian Pacific Cultural Village and the Creative Space. We have Jason and Mel here today from the SAC Asian Pacific Cultural Village, and Remy from the Creative Space who are here today to accept this resolution. Just a little bit about the Sacramento Asian Pacific Cultural Village. Their mission is to celebrate and promote all forms of Asian, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander artistic and cultural expression, thereby really creating a sense of belonging and community. Next week, they will be hosting the annual Sacramento Asian Pacific Film Festival from May 13th to the 14th at the Sofia Home B Street Theater. That's located at 2700 Capitol Avenue, so make sure you check that out. I would really encourage many of you to attend the film festival, to learn more about the stories of our diverse community through short films, documentaries, and our people. And then, secondly, we are also presenting this resolution to our amazing API employee resource group. As you know, as I often share, nothing in this city gets done without our incredible staff. And I want to take this opportunity to thank Candace and Sally, who are our co-leads for the API ERG, that's our API Employees Resource Group. But I also like to take this moment to center Cassie and Ryan, who are our co-leads for the Planning Committee this year. There's an upcoming API luncheon happening on May 18th, 11 to 1, at William Land Park. And really just wanted to take this opportunity to thank our incredible city staff, Candace, Sally, Cassie, and Ryan, just for all the work that y'all are doing, in particular, really ensuring that we have a supportive space for our API employees, making sure that our city continues to promote inclusion, and really expand our history and cultural awareness. And if you are a staff at the city of Sacramento and you don't identify as Asian American Pacific Islander, that's okay. You don't have to be API employee to join, so we really encourage you to join. And again, really honored to co-present this resolution to two amazing organizations. And yeah, all of our amazing residents in this city, I mean, what makes Sacramento so beautiful is our diversity. And so, really excited for May and all the great events that are happening this month to celebrate Asian Americans, Pacific Islander, and Native Hawaiians in the city of Sacramento. And with that, I will hand it back to Vice Mayor Garrett to say a few words. And I believe we have speakers that will say a few words, and we also have a performance.
Great, well, thank you very much. And I don't know if we should have Jason Young and May Fong and Cassie come up now to say a few words. Come on up to the podium. And as they come up to the podium, first, you know, the council member who represents Little Saigon, I want to, you know, talk about, a little bit about the, just the rich history that our city has had with the Asian Pacific Islander American experience and the contributions that they've had. You know, even this last week, when we were discussing, in my new role at the California Air Resources Board, about the locomotive regulation, when we think about the beginning of California, and a lot of it centered in Sacramento, a lot of it from our Chinese-Americans and the history of Chinese-Americans here, also the work that many of our leaders that came out of Sacramento, like Robert Matsui, who fought for the rights and the rights of the Constitution. To, one, I want to recognize, you know, my own chief of staff, Koi Seetern, you know, who, because of her work and her diligence, and it taught me about the forgotten war and many of our refugees, you know, Vietnamese, Mong, Mian, Luasian, and Indo-Chinese that have contributed to our city's greatness in Council District 6 and throughout the city. But personally, I also want to thank Jason Jong and Mel Fong from the Sacramento Asian Pacific Cultural Village for, you know, making sure that we figure out how to elevate and how to make this, make the story more known through the arts and the performing arts and the visual arts. And so, I'm excited to make sure that Sacramento provides that. And with that, let's go ahead and bring them up, and love to have a little quick comments. And then, we have a great presentation here from our very own Taiko Drummers of Sacramento.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And the City Council. We take this time to thank you for embracing our vision, our mission, and this journey that started about nine years ago in a little Starbucks cafe, and here we are nine years later. I'd like to introduce one of the founders of Sacramento Cultural Village, Jason Jong. Speak a couple of words.
Thank you very much, Mel. Thank you, members of City Council, Vice Mayor. It's really an honor and a privilege to be speaking with you here today to really uplift and celebrate our cultural diversity. As a Sacramento, born and raised here in Sacramento, I take really great pride in how our city has shifted, and just even seeing the faces on City Council and among City staff. And so, I want to mirror some of those comments that were made by Councilmember Vang and Guerra, that, you know, we are at a changing moment in our city's history. There's a lot of pride, there's a lot of energy and synergy, but I think that one of the most critical elements of that is our diversity. And the changing demographics that we see in the Asian and Pacific Islander community alone is really quite impressive, right? With the number of Southeast Asian immigrants, just folks from all walks of life coming, calling Sacramento home, and contributing in many ways. So, the Sacramento Asian Pacific Cultural Village has two programs, the Sacramento Asian Pacific Film Festival on the 13th and 14th, a number of films followed by live performances. One of our featured, our closing night feature film is a documentary that features our one and only Tiffany Tomarabuchi Sensei, artistic director of the Sacramento Taiko Don. And they are here, Tiffany with her, one of the co-instructors of Sacramento Taiko Don, decades-long history, one of the most significant cultural institutions in our entire region. And there's a documentary that features Tiffany that will be followed by a performance with the Sacramento Taiko Don, and they're gonna give you a taste of that right now. Thank you. cultural arts institutions in the region. If I may have just a few more moments to introduce my colleague, Remy Tokunaga, and together with Jennifer, they are the Creative Space, and she has information about another upcoming event this Saturday, Saturday that we're co-producing, Asian Pacific Culture Fest. Last year, we saw 6,000, we're probably looking at 7,000 or 8,000 this year.
That's great. Welcome this evening. Hopefully, those are, some of them will spend some hotel rooms here as well.
That's right. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here today. As Jason mentioned, my name is Remy Tokunaga. I'm one of the co-owners of the Creative Space in Midtown. My sister and I co-own the business and the building, and we're event coordinators for the Sacramento area. As Jason mentioned, we're proud to present and put on the second Asian Pacific Cultural Culture Fest out at District 56 this Saturday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We're gonna have over 100 small businesses there, and it's just a day to celebrate, you know, what makes us similar, but also celebrate our uniqueness. And that's told through everything that we do, from our performances and our, what storytelling we put into our crafts and our food, and just bringing the community out to celebrate that. So, again, thank you again, May 6th, District 56, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Well, that's great. Let's give them another big round of applause here. And one, one great pride that I have today is also asking from our Employee Resource Group, or ERG group, Ryan and Cassie to come up here and talk a little bit about, you know, the efforts. We have so many great staff, let's give them a big round of applause. Our API staff here are amazing.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Guerra and City Council members. My name is Ryan Pham, and I'm here with the wonderful Cassie Violetti from IT. We are a part of the Planning Committee Group, and we are honored and humble to receive your recognition on behalf of the ERG group members, our City Manager Howard Chan, our leaders, as Mai have mentioned, Candace and Sally, and of course, our wonderful Planning Committee, who has spent endless hours to put together a wonderful event for you folks. Our theme this year is to honor our past, celebrate our present, and focus on our future. And with that, I will turn over to my co-lead, and she will share with you the detail. Here's Cassie.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan.
I'm sorry. I had that in my speech, but I want to keep it short. My name is Ryan Pham, I'm the Business Services, your Business Services Division Manager from the Department of Utility. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Good evening, council members. My name is Cassie Violetti. I work for the IT Department in Admin Division. It's my pleasure to share with you the events that we have planned for this month. We are celebrating our AAPI Month every week in the city. And with that, today is the resolution and the nice presentation that's been presented. And then, our, this Thursday, we are doing a kickoff, a virtual lunch kickoff, to actually showcase the background, some statistics of AAPI, highlighting local community leaders of the economic engine that AAPI has been contributing to the city. Along with that, also highlighting our employees, from executive to middle management and to our field workers, because as our employees are a big part of making the city work. And then, our following week, next week, we will be doing a virtual food demonstration, because in our AAPI communities, food is how we show love through our, and that's how we communicate, that's how we cope, and we show our comfort. So, we will be showcasing a demonstration on, a cooking demonstration. And then, on our third week, we hope you all join us for our luncheon at Sacramento Land Park, William Land Park, on May 18th. As Councilmember Vang so highlighted earlier, along with that, we will have entertainment, we'll have a fashion show to showcase all the different costumes and representing all of the API community. We have a line of speakers that is also, and a lot of good food. So, and also, lastly, we are leveraging our community organizations, just like Jason shared earlier, the Film Festival, we are highlighting that among our API ERG, also the Asian Pacific Culture Fest this week, and then our AAPI Night Market at Capital Mall through our Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce. So, thank you, everyone, and we hope you join us May 18th.
Well, thank you very much. If we could ask all of our city employees to come up for a photo, all our presenters, our Taiko drummers as well, for a quick resolution, and just to personally thank all of our city employees as well, who are committing so much to our city, including our City Manager Howard Chan, and those who have contributed for many years here. So, come on up.
And I have to say, as they gather, Vice Mayor, they are not joking about the food at the staff. I'm actually really bummed that I can't come to the staff lunch this year. I will be at the API market, but it was an amazing spread, so highly encourage you all to stop by.
Yes, no, no, the luncheon was great. I appreciate the luncheon and the night market, always, always a wonder. If we can get our ERG folks, we'll come into the front. Howard, if you-
Vice Mayor, you can join us?
Yes.
Don't everybody go to the bar?
Yeah. She's taking him there. Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Let's have the guests.
Yeah, let's have them.
Oh, okay. Dolly, okay, thank you.
And then, yeah, I need staff, my staff, more API coming.
I guess I'll go.
I'll help you with one of them.
One, two, three, one more. One, two, three, got it.
Wait, I got like 20 phones over here. Okay, three, two, one.
One more. Is this on your phone? I'll get your phone.
Yeah. This is how you get a cool shirt.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If your phone doesn't have it, let me know.
Thank you. Thank you again, City Council, Sacramento City Council, council members, and especially thank you to all the behind-the-scenes volunteers from day one that make all of these events, our organization, as you know, and all of the city staff members that put this together. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you again. Great, thank you. And I was very impressed as they moved the big drum out of here. So, that's always, watching them set up, it's always exciting here. Okay, well, thank you very much again. Great celebration. I think we've got more this month to come. Okay, we're moving on to our next item of the agenda. Madam Clerk, we have four items on the consent calendar to be moved off consent to the next meeting. Items 17, 22, 24, and 32, and item 24 to, with direction to come back with the documents and supporting material that was presented to Law &amp; Ledge as well. Let me pass it over to the Chair of Law &amp; Ledge regarding this item as well.
Okay, yes, briefly, on item 24, appreciate Vice Mayor moving this to next week so we could see both the original ordinance, or the original ceremonial resolution, as well as the new proposed ceremonial resolution. I want to appreciate the Law &amp; Legislation Committee members for the robust discussion. Some of the context has changed. I know Local 1,000 has met, was, is in process of meeting with several of the other local unions about these measures, and would appreciate the opportunity to bring a fuller conversation back to the dais next week. So, thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you. And I know the mayor wanted to make comments on a number of these items here, so we wish him speedy health and recovery and see him here next week. Okay, let me move this over now. Members, items that folks would like to speak-
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, did I hear you correctly? 32 is also being moved on?
That is correct, 32. Yeah, 32 in the discussion calendar.
32 is what?
17, 22, 24, and 32. Do I hear any more? Do I hear 33, 35, 36? No?
And 32 is a discussion item.
Yeah, perfect. So, yeah, 17, 22, 24, and 32. Perfect. Do I have members wishing to comment or speak or pull other items on the agenda? I see Councilmember Vang.
Yes, not pull, but I'd like to comment on two items, item 10 and item 21.
So, 10 and then item-
21.
21, okay. So, that's Vang for item 10, and comment on item 21 as well. Other members? Valenzuela.
I'd also love to make comments on item 21.
Okay, so also, Valenzuela on item 21. Okay, other members, comment on other items. Saying, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and move on to the public comment on consent.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have two speakers, Ryan Masano on item number 13, and then online, I have call-in user one.
Mr. Masano.
Good evening. It's good to be back. I'm glad to be back. I'm not sure if the feeling's mutual, but it doesn't really matter to me. Perseverance is more prevailing than violence. In many things which cannot be taken when they are together, yield themselves up little by little when they are taken little by little. That's from Plutarch. So, you might ask, how come somebody who just thinks something radically different from all the rest of us is coming up here to talk to us? Because it starts with one, and this will soon be very big. So, hopefully, you pay attention, because it's gonna be sad if you're overwhelmed by something which you had the chance to do something about. This COVID, it's a big hoax, and you know, the fact that you all are wearing masks shows that you don't yet realize that. Yours truly was arrested three times for not wearing a mask, including once right here in the steps of Sacramento, when we had sharpshooters on the state Capitol steps. And if I followed the Talmud, I'd turn my back too. According to the Talmud, I am an animal and a beast, and every woman in here who is not a Jew is a whore and a prostitute. So, wow.
Vice Mayor, there is a limit for ignorance.
Have you ever studied the Talmud? Let me, let's continue with-
You haven't even studied the Talmud, you ignoramus. Why don't you shut your mouth and listen?
Listen.
No, I told you to shut your mouth and listen. I have the First Amendment.
Hold on here.
Point of order.
Ignoramus, you need to learn to shut your mouth. You have two ears and one mouth, so you could listen twice as much as you talk.
The amount of ignorance in you-
Why don't you just listen? That's what you're here for. You're not here to talk, you're here to listen. I had to listen to you, you listen to me.
Councilmember Laloie? Hold on, there's a point of order on here.
And I want my time back for your council member who doesn't know to keep his mouth shut when I'm talking.
Hold on here. Madam Clerk, could you please-
And he's cursing too, listen to him. This is the kind of language that you use, because your mind is filthy and your mouth is filthy. You perverted, deranged, degenerate-
Excuse me, excuse me, sir. The point of order is for you not to speak directly to a council member, you speak to all of us at one time, please.
I will speak to whoever I please. You understand that?
You speak to all of us at one time.
I'm gonna speak to everyone I please. You're gonna sit back in your chair, you're an elected official, you work for me.
But the-
Do you understand that?
Madam Clerk-
Go sit back in your chair and listen.
Seconds on the clock, and put the 20 seconds on the clock. The member, the public will speak to the council as a whole.
I am speaking to the council, and I will speak to any individual member on the council that I please to. And you are a tyrant for trying to tell me what I can and cannot say. We just had communism where 100 million were killed by this small group here. Yeah, I would turn my back too. 100 million were killed by people, and we're not gonna have this repeated again. We're gonna learn the lesson, and we're gonna make sure it doesn't happen again. And I'm gonna be back up here.
So, Vice Mayor, I have one speaker online.
Madam Clerk, move on to the next speaker.
Thank you. Call-in user one, if you'll unmute.
Yes, this is Lambert, and I'm, I'm gonna speak on item 12, 13, and 10, and I'm gonna do it in two minutes. 12 and 13 talks about ARPA funding, and I believe Measure U monies, and also community reinvestment monies and CARES monies. And I want, I want the Vice Mayor and the rest of the rostrum to realize that in District 2, when they come around talking about those funding streams, they're now starting to talk about matching funds. And I've been to different meetings around the city, they don't talk about matching funds in different parts of the city. There should be no matching funds for federal funding that comes into the coffers of City Hall. What are you doing? That's predatory lending. Why would you ask the undeserved community to have matching funds? And then, number 10, I would like to know, when are they gonna open up that library? Because it used to be the host of Sacramento News and Review, which was one of the best journalistic newspapers in Sacramento. They were the ones who exposed the racist practices in the city manager's office. So, shout out to them. But I want to find out, when are they gonna open up that library? Because if not, it's a boondoggle. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, I have no more speaker.
Okay, Madam Clerk, there's clarification here from Public Works. I want to make sure, and I'm looking over at the City Attorney. We had noticed that item 17 would be polled. Is there any conflict for us to adding item 17 to be voting on in this consent calendar, since we have not had a motion yet?
And I apologize, Vice Mayor, that was my error. Staff asked, gave me a heads-up that it might be pulled for discussion, but did not want it continue to affect your meeting.
So, we don't have a motion yet of pulling that. Is, Madam City Attorney, is that okay? To vote on item 17?
So, the question, Vice Mayor, is whether or not the council can vote to continue it?
Yes, since we, since we announced that we would be pulling it from consent, pulling it from this agenda item. But we're not.
Oh, you're no longer pulling? No, no, you're putting-
Okay, good, very good. I just want to make sure that's-
Yeah, you just amend the motion to remove 17 from it.
Perfect, thank you. Let's go with Councilmember Vang, Mayor Protem Vang, then Councilmember Maple.
Thanks. You're taking comments on items now, right?
Yes.
practices in the city manager's office. So shout out to them. But I want to find out, when are they going to open up that library? Because if not, it's a boondoggle. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, I have no more speaker.
Okay, Madam Clerk, there's clarification here from Public Works. I want to make sure, and I'm looking over at the city attorney. We had noticed that item seventeen would be polled. Is there any conflict for us to adding item seventeen to be voting on in this consent calendar since we have not had a motion yet?
And I apologize, Vice Mayor, that was my error. Staff asked, gave me a heads-up that it might be pulled for discussion, but did not want it continue to affect your meeting.
So we don't have a motion yet of pulling that. Is, Madam, City Attorney, is that okay? To vote on item seventeen?
So the question, Vice Mayor, is whether or not the council can vote to continue it?
Yes, since we, since we announced that we would be pulling it from consent, pulling it from this agenda item. But we're not.
Oh, you're no longer pulling? No, no, you're putting-
Okay, good, very good. I just want to make sure that's-
Yeah, you just amend the motion to remove seventeen from it.
Perfect, thank you. Let's go with Councilmember Vang, Mayor Pro Tem Vang, then Councilmember Maple.
Thanks. You're taking comments on items now, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to comment on item ten and ten. I'll comment on item twenty-one as well, but I'm going to hand it over to Councilwoman Valenzuela. Item ten, ten is actually an item that my office and city staff worked on two years ago. The city recently received 5.5 million from the state Building Forward Library Facilities Improvement Grant to renovate MLK Library in Metta View. And tonight, what we're doing is we're voting to establish the expenditure budget for this. This vote also gives us authority to apply for millions of investment at the North SAC Hagenwood Library. Crossing my fingers, Councilmember Luloi, that we're going to be able to secure those dollars for Del Paso Heights as well. I really just wanted to take this time to thank Jared Keller, the Deputy Director from the SAC Public Library, who worked with our office and our city staff to make this happen. But especially our public works staff. I want to give a shout-out to James Christensen, our Facilities Manager, and Matt Rinkler, who's our Program Specialist, who worked incredibly hard on this grant to ensure that we can draw down these state dollars for South Sacramento and for Metta View. And so, really excited that we were able to secure 5.5 million dollars to renovate and expand MLK, one of the oldest libraries here in the city of Sacramento that has not had a facelift for a really long time and has dire need, especially in that community in Metta View. And so, just really want to say thank you to city staff for working with our office, working with the SAC Public Library to draw down these dollars to really invest in South Sacramento. And with that, I will hand it to Councilmember Valenzuela to speak on item twenty-one, I think.
Councilmember Valenzuela, and then I'll go to Councilmember Maple, and then Councilmember Luloi.
Well, we'll get there. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Vice Mayor. Want to just commend a lot of people for bringing item twenty-one, which would expand our existing pride flag practice to not just include City Hall, but to include every city building across the city that has a flagpole. And this seems like a simple symbolic measure, but really, at a time with so much increased hate and bigotry in our community, we feel very strongly that expanding the pride flag's presence across our city at every public building is a really important statement for us to be making. So I'm really excited to see this item come forward today. I really want to applaud the people who I know worked on this, including Asia in the Mayor Pro Tem's office, Zack in my office. And I want to give a special shout-out to the individual who whispered this idea to me at the last pride flag raising, which was Assistant City Manager Laney Milstein, who said, hey, I think this would be a great idea. And now it's coming to fruition here finally, just in time for Pride Month to start in next month. So, I know the city staff sent out the invite for the pride flag raising on May 31st. I hope everybody will come out for that, and really hope everyone will support this gesture and item tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Valenzuela. Let me go to item seventeen. I have Councilmember Maple, and then Councilmember Luloi.
Was Mike going to talk on twenty-one as well?
Mike, were you going to talk on twenty-one?
I was just gonna, yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm really proud of Parker, Councilman Valenzuela, and that's the city staff, to really, you know, pass a resolution as an action. This is about solidarity, awareness, to really continue our efforts to ensure that Sacramento remains a safe and healthy place for all of our residents. Especially, we are in May, but you know, June is coming up. And as we approach Pride Month, and really take this time to celebrate the joys and accomplishments and progress of our LGBTQIA community, it's so important that we do this, not just as a symbol, but as our continued efforts and action to really center folks who are at the margin, right? Folks who have a voice but we don't listen to. And so, just really proud that hopefully we'll get a unanimous vote on this, and so that we could, you know, institutionalize this symbolic effort in the city of Sacramento. So thank you so much.
Perfect. I think still on twenty-one, we have Councilmember Kaplan. Councilmember Kaplan. And then thank you for submitting the resolution, I think with the mayor on a few new-
Transgender Day of Visibility.
Yes, exactly. There you go. My tongue was tied there.
Yes. I just thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to echo what my colleague said. In today's day and age, that we're dealing with more hate than ever. And people who feel the ability that they can stand up and in public spew the hate, and that hate be justified and acceptable. And where states are vilifying our brothers and sisters and our LGBTQIA family members, friends, individuals, this is not what America was built on. I am proud of our city. I am proud to be a Jewish woman who stands here-
Father, without your body.
That we are all one together. We are better together. Bigotry, hate, bullying will never make me back down. And I'm a proud ally of our LGBTQIA community, and will stand in solidarity with everybody here, with all my council members and the diversity that we have in our community, because together we are stronger when we stand up for each other and denounce the hate that is showing up.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Kaplan. Let me bring this over to Councilmember Jennings on item twenty-one.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm in support of my colleagues on standing in solidarity and addressing the hate issues that we have. My question is a process question, and I think I need some direction, and just to understand, should we, at this point, look at how we want to address other causes and other flags that will come before us? Should we do it on a one-by-one basis? Or should we form a committee that comes to us, gathers our thoughts and ideas, and comes back for approval through one of our committee structures? And so I just need some, a little bit of direction, because while I'm in support of the pride flag and this item at this point in time, there are a lot of other causes that we're going to have to have this important question with as well. And I'd rather do it on a large-scale basis as opposed to a one-by-one basis. And so, I just want to have that conversation while we're talking about this, if we're able to do that, and talk about a process in order to be able to come back with the number of flags that we want to present and address to the council.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jennings. I've asked the city manager here to come back with a consideration of that question and how we address that, and for the council's consideration.
Okay.
Thank you. Others on item twenty-one, Councilmember Maple, item twenty-one.
Thank you. And I just echo the comments of my colleagues, and I just really want to appreciate city staff as well and our LGBTQ ERG to help put this on as well. And I'm really looking forward to the event. So, just grateful, grateful for all the work that's been on into this.
On item twenty-one, again, I will associate myself with the comments made today strongly, strongly. And it's, and it's, the distasteful hateful comments during the public comment, I think, are deplorable. With that, let me move on to item seventeen, Councilmember Maple, and Councilmember Luloi on item seventeen.
Thank you.
Councilmember Maple.
Thank you. So I just had a, I was reading through our public comments on the e-comment report, and I just wanted to elevate some comments that came forward regarding item seventeen. So, one, first, I'm super appreciative that, you know, the county and the city is helping pay for this, is embarking on these improvements to the streets. Many of these reside in my district or nearby. And at least one of them has been a subject of a lot of, a lot of comment from constituents regarding the status of the street, the safety of it, the safety of children, and so on. So I'm really excited to see the work being done. But some of the comments that folks have made is around, could we use this as an opportunity to, since we're already going in, well, the county's going in and doing construction, and we're helping share the cost of that, is this a possibility that we could also include pedestrian safety improvements as a part of that? And so, I don't know the answer, but I wanted to see if that's maybe something staff could address.
Let me bring this over to the city manager real quick. This may answer Councilmember Luloi's question as well.
I'm going to ask Assistant City Manager Ryan Moore to come up. But I think if we don't have, you know, the finer-grain details on this, we can do this as a report back to the council as well. So, Ryan, you want to just hit, if you can?
Sure, sure. Good evening, Vice Mayor, and Member of the City Council, Ryan Moore, your Assistant City Manager. So we do take these items forward periodically when we have a maintenance project or a traffic safety project on a road that straddles the city border. In this case, I think the one that was being brought up is Fourteenth Avenue. The north side of Fourteenth Avenue is in the city, the south side of Fourteenth Avenue is in the county. So we do like to work on our own streets that we own. It's 100% our purview. We always look for opportunities to do complete street improvements, bike lanes, drainage improvements, traffic signal upgrades, what have you. With the county, that's, that's a, has to be a group decision. In this case, on Fourteenth Avenue, I think the street's only 30 feet wide, which is not wide enough to accommodate Class Three, or Class Two bike lanes. We can certainly go back, though, working with the county and look if there are specific pedestrian safety improvements that council would like us to explore. We're happy to do that through a report back ending.
Wonderful, thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Councilmember Maple. Councilmember Luloi, on item seventeen.
Actually, it's item ten, Vice Mayor.
Oh, item ten, okay. We'll move back to item ten after this.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments on seventeen? Seeing none, Councilmember Luloi, item ten.
Thank you very much. Item ten, just to kind of follow what my colleague, Councilmember Vang alluded to, this is a great, I'm so glad that the first round funding went through. And it's my understanding that the staff feels very comfortable and confident that the second funding would also go through, which will be focusing on the North Sacramento Library, the old News and Review. So, again, I'm very grateful to the staff for their hard work and commitment to get our libraries up to date and, in fact, opening a library. And on that note, just a quick comment on item number twenty-one. We live in a society that really hate and not being able to talk and understand each other, there's no room for it. You're looking at a council here that I'm very, very proud, sitting next to my colleague as a Muslim man. And I'm very, very proud of that, that we can sit down and talk. And we might not agree on some things, and we might agree on some stuff. But at the end of the day, hate and, hate is equivalent to ignorance. And as we look at around the world, the ignorance has resulted in a lot of lives getting destroyed. And the time has come that for us to look at things and with a different lens and understand that everyone has a story. And unless we sit down and have a conversation, just spitting hate is nothing that should be tolerated or even worth listening to. So, thank you very much, Mr. Vice.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Luloi. And I'm going to ask here, Councilmember Jennings has a question for council regarding the public comment. Councilmember Jennings.
So this is really in regards to the point of order that I made? And you can let me know if this is the right time to speak to that, or should I wait to comments not on the agenda?
It'd be more appropriate, comments not on the agenda, Councilmember.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings, appreciate that. Any other items, Councilmember Jennings? If not, we'll hold that for items not on the agenda for council comments. Okay, let me bring up Representative from Assemblymember McCarty's office regarding item fourteen. This was a, we didn't see this in time here. Ms. Costa, thank you. Erica.
Trying to open my phone here. Good evening, council members. My name is Erica Costa. I'm with Assemblymember McCarty's office here to speak on item fourteen, the Community Reinvestment and American River Parkway Grants item. We know that today is a technical adjustment on this item. The Assemblymember has simply asked me to share a statement with you on his behalf regarding these funds. Council members, I would like to thank you for your partnership, and I'm thankful that the last year, we encountered a fiscal year with such incredible investment opportunities. And I'm thankful that we were able to secure these funds together for the social and economic prosperity of the city of Sacramento. Widespread in their reach, these investments will have benefits for generations to come. I'd like to thank you for your partnership in moving these investments forward. So we know this is a technical adjustment, but the Assemblymember simply asked that I come and express his enthusiasm for the movement of these funds and appreciation of your partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Appreciate your comments and the support of Assemblymember McCarty for the American River Parkway. With that, I want to thank our city staff on a lot of these issues today. Let me bring you back to the council here for a motion or comments or questions. We're removing items twenty-two, twenty-four, and thirty-two. Is there an action from the council?
No.
It's been moved by Councilmember Maple. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Councilmember Jennings. Seeing no other questions, and since no council members are virtual, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Measure passes. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move on to our next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Our next item is item thirty, a public hearing. Ordinance listing 1301, Forty-Fifth Street, which is the Hail Marks House, is a landmark on the Sacramento Register of Historic and Cultural Resources.
All right, we have a staff here to present on this item from our Preservation Director. Now, let's, I'll go ahead and move, ask Councilmember Valenzuela.
Sure. Seeing no staff coming forward, thank you for the excellent staff report. I am happy to open and close the public hearing and move this item forward.
It's probably, it's been properly moved. The public hearing is closed. There's a second. It's been seconded by Councilmember Luloi. Are there any further comments from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Measure passes. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move on to item-
Vice Mayor, for the record, we had no speakers on that item.
Thank you very much for making that clear, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item number thirty-one is discussion calendar, our quarterly climate update. We have Ms. Venema to make a presentation.
Good evening, Ms. Venema. This is a receiving comment for our climate update.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Geta and council members. Pleased to be here today. As noted, I'm Jennifer Venema, your Climate Action Lead in the Office of Climate Action and Sustainability. So we're providing our first annual, pardon me, our first quarterly update tonight on climate work today for 2023. But the items that I'll be speaking to today are the work of our entire city organization. This is work we do together across all of our departments. And really quickly, we want to thank council members and 300 volunteers that came out to our Earth Day cleanups. As you can see on the slide here at San Juan Park, a lot of folks got out cleaning up trash to commemorate Earth Day. So thank you. With that, I'm going to provide a brief outline. Since this is our first report of the year, we'd like to provide a little bit of context for the council before talking through the status of key climate action tasks. We'll then move on to some highlights and funding updates as well as upcoming alerts. As it relates to that context, we want to ground the work and the acknowledgement of the city's contribution to the crisis of climate change. Ultimately, this comes down to activities in our community that cause greenhouse gas emissions, largely from the burning of fossil fuels in our vehicles and in our buildings. As emphasized here in pink, transportation is the largest sector, contributing 56% of our baseline emissions, followed closely by fuel use in buildings. Together, residential and non-residential buildings contribute 38% of our local emissions. So this provides the baseline from which we've been developing and implementing actions. We also have a very strong policy context at the city of Sacramento, building on years of commitments and innovations. Most recently, several key milestones include the convening of the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change and directives from the city council to elevate and act with greater urgency. All of this direction is summarized in two key city guiding documents for climate. First, the 2021 Climate Work Plan, which lists our early implementation items that we are moving forward even as plans have been under development. Secondly, the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan has been under development for some time, but this charts the city's long-term path to deal with climate change. And as we'll touch on here, we haven't been waiting for this plan to be completed. We've been actively implementing. And with that, I'm going to walk us through where we are at in terms of those early climate actions and longer-term initiatives. We've grouped tasks from the Climate Work Plan into three general buckets. There's more detail and attachment to it with the staff report. But first, there's those tasks that are more behind the scenes relating to internal processes and capacity. Second, this happens with an emphasis on building new partnerships and projects, which takes a lot of time and work and recognizes the city cannot solve this crisis alone. We have to do this together and with involvement of the broader region and community. Lastly, our tasks fall within the bucket of key strategic initiatives. We have a number of efforts underway. And of that updated task list that we took to city council early last year, we've completed three of those items. Twenty-eight of the 38 tasks are ongoing or underway at varying levels, supported by the one-time funding commitment from city council of 4.4 million. And while five items are postponed, these are items that have required more work or hit delays as we try to formalize partnerships and respond to community input. For example, one of these actions that's been postponed is the Climate Equity Pilot. We've been listening to community members, conducted interviews and held meetings, and it's taken a little more time to bring on a grant administrator to streamline the program and respond to the feedback we've heard. Now, we're going to share some of the highlights of what has been happening under these buckets. been happening under these buckets. So, we have been moving forward on many impactful projects, and a few of the examples are identified here. First, we're starting to implement grants that we've secured to electrify at least 27 low-income homes in the Stockton Boulevard area. This effort has just kicked off. Since January 1st, the city has also issued over 40 permits for new all-electric construction. Next, moving to the realm of water use and the direction of this council, the city of Sacramento is one of the first to adopt standards for mandatory onsite water reuse. And this year, staff's been preparing to release an RFP to move forward on Phase 2, to explore opportunities to go further. As it relates to active transportation efforts, many items are underway. Staff have kicked off the Active Transportation Plan, also supported with Climate Work Plan funding, and we've started construction on a number of active transportation projects, including the $20 million Del Rio Trail, $16 million Downtown Mobility Project, and we're about to initiate construction on the first phases of the Broadway Complete Streets project. That's a $13 million capital improvement project. Importantly, all of our transportation CIPs are really focused on active transportation and maintenance work. And last highlight on this slide is we've been very successful in bringing in new funding, including $16 million through Clean California Grants. As you can see on the slide here, with this funding, we've gone to neighborhoods like Dixie Anne Neighborhood in North Sacramento to bring green alley improvements and cleanups to 23 residential alleys. And with that, we want to touch on some of our examples of municipal leadership, because we really are leading by example as well. Recently, receiving recertification of Clean Marina Status for the city-owned and operated marina. This involves the implementation of best management practices, the use of eco-friendly products, and more. We've also been putting the one-time implementation funding to good use at city facilities. Since the start of the year, we've retrofitted four fire stations with LED lighting and complimentary improvements. We are initiating retrofits at Department of Utility facilities, here as shown at 35th Avenue, and we've worked to bring in more federal and state funding as well, as council recently approved funding for the Pennell Community Center for Air Filtration Improvements, and also $4.9 million to support EV infrastructure for the city fleet. But that brings us to a key point here, that through partnership, a key takeaway is that despite the initial commitment of 4.4 million for the early action tasks in the work plan, we have been able to work to bring down more than $76 million of external investment for climate tasks just since 2021. And this has been done through significant efforts with staff, with our legislators, as you've heard here from our Senator's Office. But as you can see here, it covers the spectrum of green jobs to transportation infrastructure, as we noted, building electrification pilots, and more. So, while some of our Climate Work Plan tasks have taken more time, it's not due to staff sitting idly by. It's because we've been working very hard to ensure that the city does not miss out on many of these new one-time or special funding opportunities for climate. Importantly here, partnership has been key. In addition to the numbers on your screen, there's an additional $1.7 million of competitive grant applications we've submitted that we are crossing our fingers on and hoping for more. Here's one example of these efforts supported by additional external funds. The city has $6.9 million in ARPA funding for high-need youth and young adult workforce training in COVID recovery and green job food access opportunities. The city released the first round of that funding, about $500,000 is going to three local nonprofits for paid youth internships for high-need youth and young adults and to provide supportive services. Next phase, we're rolling this out in city departments as well, and a recent funding opportunity for more nonprofits closed on April 20th. And in addition to moving forward our local actions for climate change, we've been really working for broader regional benefit to secure significant investment. Here, as of last week, we've secured $68 million of new funding for the Sacramento Valley Station, a regional transportation hub. This funding will support regional bus depot, bus infrastructure, and charging, and there's significant steps to reduce regional highway road travel. So, all told, we have taken some significant steps, and when we add this external investment to the one-time 4.4 million commitment for climate since 2021, all told, that gets us to about a ballpark of $149 million of additional commitment for our climate action efforts. It's a sizable step since the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change, and we've been hardworking on it. We want to acknowledge that more work will be needed. To put it in the context of estimated costs to fully implement the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan by 2045, this is just 4% of the gap that we need to close. We estimate over $3 billion will be needed over the next 20 years to fully mitigate our greenhouse gas emissions. And so, this is a conversation we'll continue to have as we look at options and bring forward these documents for public review. And fortunately, time is not on our side. While we've been moving as fast as we can to implement many of these items, we're already dealing with the brunt of climate impacts, most recently with the storms that hit in late December and early January. So, in addition to the $3 billion to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, there's going to be more costs associated with storms, and our existing operations are likely to become more expensive as well. Most recently, the most current data is that we submitted requests to FEMA for about $10 million plus just for the storm impacts from the period of late December to late January. And we'll see, there is cost-share requirements, but it's an example that this is costly, and that doesn't even reflect the damage to our homeowners or property owners or the loss of life that was experienced tragically during these storms. Now, we do have more upcoming items for the council, and the biggest update here is the long-awaited public release of the full 2040 General Plan and Updated Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. We're really excited that these are now out for public review. These will be available through August for review, and they're gonna be followed soon by some other key documents, including the Urban Forest Plan and the Parks Plan. So, more to come as we'll be bringing these forward for council direction. There will be outreach and plenty of opportunities for input. We also want to acknowledge as a last alert to the council that we continue to advance the Directive from the City Council on Building Electrification. We've been preparing an existing building electrification strategy, and we're looking to bring this forward and publish it soon. That will be delayed for a release in the summertime, and we'll bring that back to the council, because there's other updates and legal developments that the city Attorney's Office is reviewing. And as that information gets confirmed, we'll come back and report to the council on next steps for electrification. So, with that, want to close with the emphasis that through these forthcoming plans, there are going to be many conversations and opportunities for discussion on direction, resources, and priorities. In the meantime, we'll continue to move forward with those we have and to seek to identify those additional near-term opportunities as they arise, to really maximize impact for our community. So, thank you. And with that, I will close, and I'm happy to take your questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Venema. Madam Clerk, let's move to public comment, and then I have Councilmembers Valenzuela, Maple, and Vang, and I think Councilmember Kaplan also had a comment here. Madam Clerk, let's move on with public comment.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have two speakers. The first one is in chambers, Rosie, and is it Yehkules? Yehkoo? Thank you. And then online, I have Kate Wilkins.
Hi. My name's Rosie Yehkoo. I'm a resident of District 7, and I'm here, I really appreciate hearing everything that was said here, and I have also started taking a look at the CAP. And it's great that we're making some progress, but as Jennifer mentioned, there's a lot of funding that's gonna need to happen, and some of that needs to happen this year. In order to enact all of this stuff and do it in a timely fashion, the city has to have staff to pull, to keep pushing this work forward. And as we can see, with a little bit of investment, we're getting a lot of return. It's actually bringing money to the city. So, some of the ideas that I know 350 and the Climate Coalition have sent to the mayor's office for funding options include, you know, development impact fees, grants, motor vehicle registration surcharges, tax on transportation networks, local parcel taxes, private-public partnerships, utility fees, local tax, enhanced infrastructure district, climate bonds, using avoided cost calculations, which can be very important, and road use pricing. Some of these are actually in the CAP, suggested in the CAP language, which is great, but some of them are not. And also, like, the role of a potential Sacramento Public Bank in all of this. We need to be serious about how to get this work done, because we have, you know, as Jennifer mentioned, we've covered like about 4% of what we need to do funding-wise to get there. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kate Wilkins.
Hi, everyone. This is Kate Wilkins with 350 Sacramento. First, major props to Rosie for being there in person. Thanks, Rosie. I am calling on behalf of 350 to draw attention to the climate report card that we released and sent to all councilmembers on Thursday of last week. That was sent out in the morning. This report card evaluated the city's climate progress in regards to the recommendations published by the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change three years ago. For new councilmembers, that commission was a year-and-a-half process undertaken by community leaders with immense effort and input put in by experts in various and many subject areas. For this report card we released last Thursday, 13 local groups provided input on the city's progress in equity, foundational principles like urgency and accountability, the built environment, mobility, and community health and resiliency. Those groups were United Latinos, Trees for Sacramento, Third Act Sacramento, Sacramento Metro Advocates for Rail and Transit, Social Justice Politicor, Sierra Club Sacramento, SAC Moves, SAC EV, SABA, House Sacramento, Ecos Civic Threat, and Alchemist CBC. Overall, the city received a D+. I hope councilmembers will seriously review and address the issues raised in this report card in the upcoming council and budget discussions happening very soon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, I do want to remind the council that this item will be coming back here in a few months for the summer 2023 report out. And I know Mayor Steinberg had comments and directions that he'll be giving to staff for the report back here. Okay, let me bring this over to Councilmember Valenzuela, Maple, Vang, and then Kaplan.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Jennifer, I have one question for you about the Climate Action Plan. I know it was just released like last week, so I'm not gonna get into the details of all of my questions, but I know the last time we talked about that plan, we talked about modeling what a zero-carbon plan would look like to move earlier, obviously recognizing it might not meet the technical issues of the CAP, but wanting to model what that might take if we wanted to move faster. Is there any update you can provide on that?
Well, councilmember, it's a good question. We do think about these things. So, that was the discussion and the information we brought forward at the December workshop, I believe. And so, when we went through the metrics, the thing to keep in mind is that it's a resource question. We know the metrics that have to be done. We know where our emissions come from. So, the number of homes to retrofit or cars to switch out doesn't change. It's a question of where the resources come from. So, within our contracts, we did not do additional, wasn't informative modeling to be done, but it's more, again, going back to the resources in terms of the speed.
Yeah. I guess that was one of the questions that, because it is, it's a policy discussion around resources, right? And I think knowing what it would take to get to zero faster in terms of what that looks like in terms of costs would be really helpful for me. I know that's a question that's been raised, and so if we could get, even if it was an order of magnitude, on what that looks like compared to what the current CAP is stating, that would be helpful.
And councilmember, briefly there, we'll just point back, the number we have is that $3 billion figure that reflects buildout of our bike lanes, that reflects infrastructure, maintaining a bigger urban canopy. So, that Appendix D in the CAP provides a lot of assumptions, and we'd be happy to go through that in more detail with you.
Awesome. Yeah, because I know the $3 billion number is assuming carbon zero in 2045, if I'm correct. And I guess that's the question, is what would it cost if we were gonna try to move that forward so that that could be a policy discussion when the CAP comes back to council? Okay, thank you. That was my only question for you, if you'd like to sit down. I guess the rest of my stuff is more comments, because I do want to say that I want to echo some of the comments that Rosie made about, gosh, you really do stretch a dollar in the climate team, and it's really impressive to see how many resources have been brought down into the community through grants and partnerships and new ideas, and just really want to commend the amount of money than the amount of work that the staff team has been able to do. In fact, I often brag that I think we might have been the only city in the state of California that had the plumbers and pipe fitters support our new buildings ordinance. People don't, people miss that part. And I'm like, you know, in most cities, they were either neutral or opposed, and it was because the city staff did the work to come up with a just transition plan for those jobs, so that they knew that work would be replaced, and they had confidence that they would be taken care of. And I think that those sort of details and all of the questions that I hear my colleagues ask on all of our boards and commissions, when it's not always an agendized item, I mean, how often have we heard the vice mayor ask about zero emission weight refuse trucks? You know, it's like, we're in all these different spaces, asking these questions, because we're trying to find those little opportunities to leverage to say, hey, let's push a little further, let's do a little more. And really, the big-picture question here comes down to the resources question. You know, we're talking about a public bank, which would be great. The mayor is passionate about EIFDs, as we know, and I know we'll be talking a lot more about those in the near future. I mean, just last week, several of us were in DC at CAP to CAP, and Councilmember Jennings and I jumped in a cab and raced all the way across DC to meet with FTA to talk about more money for regional transit. And so, we are really pulling together in one direction, but I worry as we enter a budget climate where we know taking care of our staff and maintaining our city services is gonna be a pinch, and we're gonna need to start getting creative. The federal money's gone away, there is no more ARPA, there is no more CARES. What are we gonna do to maintain the progress that we've really built during this recovery? That the question of resources is really starting to hit a fine point. And I know I took the really hard decision last election to oppose Measure A, because I was not opposed to the funding for transit and for all the great active transportation stuff, but I was concerned about some of the projects in that list and what it would do to our climate targets. And now, we're back in that position again of having to figure out, okay, what does funding measures, what does that look like? How do we raise enough money as a region to really be able to invest, not just the billions, but all the extra work, as is what you talked about in terms of adaptation, Jennifer, with like when the storms are coming through and we're seeing more of these impacts, we need to really be reconfiguring how we think about how we pay for this stuff. So, I know these conversations are happening in multiple spaces, and this is kind of the first opportunity as a council, I think, on a dais during a public meeting, when we can talk a little bit about priorities for this, because we know in many spaces, they're talking about funding measures and what comes next for a potential county-wide measure, potential city-wide measure. And I think it's important for us to stake out early, not just the focus on transit, not just the focus on our existing roads, because I know all of us get calls about our roads and safety concerns and the need to invest to make those safer for all users. We know we need to invest way more in regional transit, but also the housing. How do we prevent the displacement? How do we afford the retrofits? How do we build more affordable housing? These are sort of, together would piece together a funding platform that I think would really help get us to that sense of urgency that the climate advocates are very appropriately citing, which is we want to go faster, we want to go further, and we need more staff to do that, we need more resources to do that. So, I guess I just want to take this opportunity to say really clearly, again, that I think the city staff is really doing a Herculean job with what they have. And I don't think, and I don't want to speak for everybody on this dais by saying that I think we all recognize that we're not allocating enough resources as it is, and that if we could, we'd have hundreds of millions of dollars every year that we'd put into all the active transportation and all of the work that we want to do. But that there is a key moment coming, and I think a key discussion that we could have about how we advocate for what that next funding measure looks like as a region, and make sure that the money that does come through hopefully soon really reflects the needs and priorities and the sense of urgency that I think voters expressed when they reject Measure A, and then I think our climate friends are expressing today. How do we make sure that measure meets where our community is at now and where it's going? and where it's going and the sense of urgency that they have? So I guess I'm putting those comments out into the ether here, but really, do you just want to commend Jennifer and your team and everybody at the city? And I know it's not just you, you presented. There's many, many folks in all departments working on this. But this is going to be a real struggle for us and I think we're entering a budget season where we know this is going to be a real struggle for us. And how do we, as a city, really equip ourselves to be a good partner and to push that forward, knowing that we don't print money and we don't hold a lot of the keys to the services and things that we need? So that's my comments and feedback today as I know those conversations are going actively in many spaces that a lot of us sit in, so wanted to say that out loud.
Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. Ed duly noted for staff and I think we'll have this conversation again in the summer. Let me bring this over to Councilmember Maple, then Vang, then Kaplan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I just want to echo a lot of the comments that Councilmember Valenzuela made. I think just the incredible amount of work, Jennifer, that you and your team have done. I think it's, you know, it's always the job of advocacy and, and even for us to push, right? But sometimes when you push, you don't always take a step back and look at what you've done. And I think that there's a lot of other cities all across the United States of America that are not even close to this point. And so I think just taking a moment to recognize that, you know, we've, we've gotten to a point where we not only identified where our problem is, but what we need to do. And those are two really important steps. And the next step is, okay, now we need to do it and we need to get the money for it. And so that's, that's our job and a lot of other jobs in our community, but we're going to be working for you to do that, to make sure that we can meet our goals. Because just, just stating in our policies and throughout every department that this is a priority for our city and is a priority for our population is, is, I think, huge and it keeps it front of mind for everyone. And I really appreciate when, when we spoke earlier on Zoom, you know, I asked about staffing and, you know, I was like, how many more staff do, you know, are needed on this team? And, and your answer was really interesting. It was, well, actually, you know, our goal here is, is that every department in the city needs to be thinking about what is their role here? And so our goal is to make sure that this work is being done and being taught and trained to in every single department and we're disseminating it out that way. And I thought that was really brilliant because that's the truth, right? You know, every single one of these things is a part of our climate strategy. Every department is a part of our climate strategy. So I appreciated that. And so I just wanted to elevate too that we're in this really, if you're a nerd like me, really exciting time where you have our, our 2040 General Plan Update Draft for Public Review just, just came out. Our Climate Adaptation and Action Plan Draft out for review. And so, you know, these pieces are all together and now, and I, and our city budget, draft budget out for review. Those are three really, really big documents that we were asking for the public's input on. And so I appreciate that there's time for people to review it and that there's going to be outreach. That includes going out in person, making sure that we're having events that people can engage with this in a, in a very real way because I want to make sure that we have that, that input from our community. But the way that I think about this is it's actually a good thing that they're coming out together because they're all related. The way I think about it is our transportation strategy is our climate strategy. Our housing strategy is our climate strategy. You know, how we think about these things over the next 17, 20 years is going to impact greenhouse gas emissions and what we choose to do. So are we choosing to do infill projects in our current footprint versus, you know, building sprawl? Are we choosing to invest in public transit versus, you know, highways? And I think I know the answer to some of those questions based on what my colleagues think. But, you know, these are the questions that are going to impact everything else and then also how are we going to do it? So that was just a really, you know, long-winded way to say thank you. And I'm really looking forward to all of these discussions and really the public outreach component. I'm glad that you're committed to making sure that we do this in a real way that captures engagement in the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maple. Councilmember Vang.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I too just wanted to take this moment just to thank Jennifer. I just have really just one comment, but really wanted to take the opportunity just to echo my colleague, my colleagues as well, especially ensuring that we have capacity at all department levels to really address our climate strategy. I think that's really important. Jennifer, thank you just so much for your heart and your hustle and your hard work and the entire team. And just really thank you for the dollars that you have already drawn down to support our climate efforts here at the city. And so I just really want to say thank you for your hard work. And I also want to say thank you as well as keeping our office in the loop and working with us closely to get more air monitors in District 8 in particular. As you know, I represent one of the 17 AB 16 communities. That's the South Sacramento Metaview community that have, that has really poor air quality. And I think for me, I just want to just share that I think it's important, as you heard earlier from Councilmember Maple, that it's kind of our role as electeds, as a city jurisdiction, to do the advocacy work. And so it's going to be important for us to continue to fight for more increased funding for all of our communities, especially those impacted by air pollution. I do appreciate the work and investment that we've already made thus far by the state, if the state is listening. But I've also seen that much of the state's funding efforts have really remained flat since the beginning of that program in particular. And so the only thing I would suggest is, you know, just for us as a city to be more aggressive in our advocacy efforts around AB 617 and just around all of the efforts. I know that you alone, Jennifer, can't do that, but really also a call to action on ways that all of us can step up to the plate. I know some of y'all have relationships at the state level already, but making sure that we are out there also speaking to our state legislator. I know Councilmember, Vice Mayor Gara is on CARP, so that's really great. I know he's on the car board advocating and fighting and hustling for our communities as well, but just wanted to put that on the radar. I think that as you are hustling, Jennifer, I think it's incumbent upon us as electeds as well just to plug in and support those advocacy efforts as well. And so just want to say that and just want to say thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Vang. Councilmember Maple. Kaplan, sorry.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Gara. Like, we can switch. Jennifer, I want to thank you for this report and all the time that staff and others have brought me up to speed on what we're doing on the Climate Action Report. It's already been said, we have limited resources. We have a lot to do. I look forward to, we're going to have a couple more bites at the apple because we have the 2040 General Plan and our Climate Action and Adaptation Plan all coming together. But you're right, Councilmember Maple, this is conversation in our budget too, as well as where are council priorities and how do we want to spread it? But I think it's also important that, to a certain extent, as we have these conversations, we hear from our experts, what's the biggest bang for our buck? We know we have limited resources. We know that transportation and carbon monoxide, that's the, that's the biggest impact. Is there, are there small things that we can do that will have a bigger impact on our air quality, getting more people on their bikes in transit that'll have a greater impact? So as we look to make these decisions, I, I would hope that we also get feedback from staff on what is, what is prioritized? You guys are the experts. So I would love to hear your feedback of what you think the city, a smart way to go about this, knowing that we have to spread it out over time. And then, you know, the elephant in the room is Sacramento was forward on the electrification. We need to have continued conversations considering the Ninth Circuit basically invalidated. And what does that mean for Sacramento? And how does that impact us as we look at climate action goals and, and moving forward? So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Councilmember Maple. Let me start at that point. I want to thank staff for that, but I would ask our city attorney if they could come back. Hopefully by summer, we'll know what the city of Berkeley has done in that Ninth Court decision. And I do want to thank our city staff for this, this, the, the work. It's a big project. It's a big one. There's a lot of pieces to it. I will say one piece that, this is the third time, I think, I've, I've seen this to the council and I'll, I'll bring it up again in the summer. We need to look at what is the economic development side of this. There is going to be a changing market and we need to figure out how Sacramento is going to lead on the, the job creation, the product development, the, where we work on it. I know SMUD is looking at some kind of charging infrastructure industry or ways to capitalize on that. Let's, let's figure out how we support them and work them in that effort. Again, it, it, we, we have a responsibility to do our job to meet our climate goals and air quality goals for the sake and health of our residents. But if we're not doing the economic development side of it, someone else will and we will lose out on it. We'll be buying products and resources from other cities or other states. So I want to stress that again for the summer presentation. Where's our economic development strategy in this? Having said that, I want to echo the comments made by Councilmember Vang, advocating more aggressively through our advocacy team at the Air Resources Board. You have my comments from the last hearing about how do we get money for the CERT process so that we get funding for the air quality management side of it? Not just the monitoring, but the funding for emission reduction. So I'd like to make sure that our advocacy team is engaged in that aggressively. We were, our region in our cities was the only one that didn't get funded out of all the entire state. And I think San Diego got an additional $5 million, which, you know, so we need to do a better job at that. I am committed to helping in that effort. Also, on, on the comment, I think, that Councilmember Kaplan had brought up on FEMA, looking at our, how do we make sure we capture all the $10 million that are out there in costs? How make sure we, like to make sure we, we bring that back as well? And there's more, more to comment. I will say, the last thing on advocacy, there are members of us who are on Regional Sanitation District. There's an opportunity to become a hydrogen center and produce our own hydrogen so that we can look at our heavy-duty emissions and our own fueling source. I want to thank our Public Works team for looking at having Sacramento's first, I think, Northern California region electric zero emission garbage truck. Those are one of the biggest VMTs in any city. And, you know, I want to thank them for moving forward in that. But I know, we know that technology will change and I think we should be at the forefront of that and saying, how do we become the leaders in that so people come to Sacramento for the solutions? So with that, thank you for the report. This is a public, this is a receiving comment and I think everyone's received their comments. City manager, any questions? Okay, with that, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and move on to the next item and thanks everyone for their engagement in this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. As we mentioned earlier, Item 32 will be moved to the next meeting. So that takes us to Item 33, which is the mandatory diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging training for city elected officials, council staff, and appointed officers.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Ami Barnes.
Chair, would it be possible for me to open up before our incredible staff does the presentation?
Yes, Councilmember Vang.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm really excited about this presentation. But first, I wanted to take the time to really center Ami Barnes, our diversity and equity manager, and just her incredible staff, Larissa and Robert, really just for their hard work to get us to this moment. Also want to give a shout out to Mayor Steinberg, who couldn't be here with us today because he's sick at home, and members of their, of our Racial Equity Committee, Councilmember Jennings and Councilmember Maple as well, in supporting to bring this forth to the full council for consideration. As I shared at the Racial Equity Committee meeting, as we embark on the SCORE Initiative, that's the Sacramento Centered on Racial Equity Initiative and Work Plan to address racial equity in the city, it's so important that this council has a shared understanding of really the racist history of our city and really working closely with our community to heal and find a path forward. As you all know, in the city of Sacramento in this country, there is a painful history of racism in our country. And even right here in the city of Sacramento, where redlining of neighborhoods happened to internment camps of Japanese-American, to really our current school-to-prison pipeline of our Black and Brown siblings. If we don't learn to recognize the ways in which racism, white supremacy operates within the system that we are all part of, then all of us may believe that we have eliminated it. And so this is really important, this item that's coming to council tonight. You know, as electeds, even me as a woman of color, as folks of color on this dais, as a cisgender individual, we too can have blind spots. And it's really important that all of us have common knowledge and vocabulary to address this as a council. And so what's coming forth today, and you'll hear more from Ami, is a mandatory training really around diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging for both current and future electeds so that we're aligned both internally and externally around race and gender equity work that's happening right now in the city of Sacramento. I believe this mandatory is a must because we have to lead by example, both for our communities and also our employees, but also to demonstrate that we are serious about being anti-racist, working on it every single day. It's not something that you wake up in the morning and then it's done. It's something that you have to constantly work at. And so I'm, I'm really excited this is finally coming to, to city council. I know it took a while, but the reason why it took a while is also because we want to make sure that we're doing this with intention. And so again, lastly, this is really important because I think understanding our own racial bias by identifying how it affects our own internal thoughts and bringing them into our consciousness can really help us to better inform our own policy decision-making and really begin to address racial equity in the city of Sacramento. And so right now, I hand it over to Ami and really just want to thank her and her entire team for working really hard to get us to this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vang. Ms. Barnes.
Thank you. Good evening, community careholders and members of the council. I don't actually have a formal presentation. I think the content is in the staff report. But I did want to highlight a few things. I wanted to thank staff, Larissa and Robert of the Office of Diversity and Equity, city manager Howard Chan, and ACM Laney Milstein as well. I'd also like to thank the members of the Racial Equity Committee for their review and feedback. We took this earlier this month for your feedback and direction and that is why we are forwarding, forwarding it to the council and for your consideration. And building upon the comments expressed by Mayor Protem Vang, for the purposes of this discussion, I would like to highlight a couple of elements of the resolution and the Exhibit A, the memorandum that is before you and that is also for public view. From the resolution, we are asking for training hours to be at least four hours every two years for city elected, their staff and appointed officers. We wanted to make sure that elected officers and staff are supported in this endeavor. There will be learning assessments to establish baseline confidence levels, competency, and learning outcomes. We want to understand the nuanced nature of the role that you all do. This would be a new endeavor for the city, but we're very excited about developing and systematizing such a training that is rooted in diversity, equity, and inclusion and belonging and racial equity. There is also, the resolution calls for a commitment to expand to all city staff citywide. So wanted to point that out. I think that's in Section 3, I believe, or 4. From the exhibit, the memorandum of the resolution, I would like to highlight that this commitment builds on the work and aligns strategically with the current work that we are doing internally for staff capacity building. are doing internally for staff capacity building. So one of them is that all 15 departments of the city have an equity team. Those equity teams went through the foundational training from the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, the role of government and racial equity, and that was completed in late 2021 and early 2022. We intend on doing that again. We are also holding a convening that is also a capacity-building endeavor for our equity teams across the city on May 19th, Friday, May 19th, from 8:30 to 3:00, 4 o'clock. And so that will be a capacity-building endeavor to support their work, their learning, and their growth in building a racial equity culture, and how we advance our Race, Gender, and Equity Action Plan. The second endeavor that is, that this aligns with, is the Equity and Inclusion Leisureship Series that we have for city staff. This is a non-mandatory, very dynamic peer-learning space where staff could come to lunch and learns from 12 to 1:00. They could go to a five-series workshop on the five competencies of diversity, equity, and inclusion, or they can participate in the self-paced 21-day racial equity habit-building challenge for 21 days. So we provide a variety of learning spaces for our staff so that it can meet their different needs in terms of their schedule, how they can participate. And also, it is to help us move beyond DEI. We are an agency that is trying to move beyond DEI, to become anti-racist, and to lean in to racial equity. And that takes learning, that takes practice, that takes competency, but more importantly, it takes shared understanding, shared vocabulary, and a shared approach. And we want this training to give that toolkit to you all as well. The third way that this aligns with our internal strategy is we have developed an online, on-demand, mandatory training on unconscious bias for all city staff who sit on interview panels. Again, this is an endeavor to advance our Race, Gender, and Equity Action Plan on workforce equity. This is scheduled while the curriculum has been developed, the rollout to all city staff, particularly who sit on interview panels, will happen before the end of 2023. So this is a really great time for this work to emerge, to develop a mandatory training for the city council, since we are well into developing learning spaces, trainings for city staff. The proposed training will be designed to meet the role and function of you as elected leaders. That's the intent. So it will need some build-out, it will need consultation, it will need assessment and research. There will be a particular emphasis on moving us past DEI and building on the pillars of diversity, the pillars and principles of diversity, equity, and inclusion, but moving into racial equity and being anti-racist. So that's really important, and that's highlighted in the resolution. This training will help develop as much-needed shared vocabulary, shared understanding of core concepts described below, that you could see there's a list of not only curriculum topics, but also learning objectives, because we want to measure the success of this training as we implement it. We don't want to do things that don't work, right? So with managed change and transformation, it is meant to be on an individual level, the council level, and the community level. So that's what we want to do in terms of the learning objectives. Thank you, and I look forward to the discussion and next steps. I really want to highlight, this is your commitment to charging yourselves with a mandatory training, and then the development of the training will happen over the next few months with your consultation. And I would love to also invite your staff's consultation in developing such a curriculum. It is meant to be ongoing, it is meant to be systematized, it is meant to be part of the onboarding for all council new in the future. So this is a really huge lift, but I believe with the work that we've been able to develop for the internal capacity building of city staff, that we will be able to create a very dynamic program, and maybe one of the first for electeds for racial equity and anti-racism. So I'm excited about leaning in with all of you about this. So look forward to questions and comments.
Great, thank you, Ami. I appreciate that. I also want to, you know, thank the leadership of Mayor Protem Vang on this and the racial equity committee. Mayor Protem, did you have some comments before we move to public comment?
Yes, I just wanted to close it off really quick.
Yes, go ahead.
Again, just really want to thank Ami, just and the team for their incredible work. Ami did go a little bit in-depth about the training. If you have more questions, you can definitely look at the appendix. But this training in particular is required every two years, just like sexual harassment trainings, whatnot. And what I also want to share is the training is reiterative, because it's evaluated on an ongoing basis, and it will be informed by the community. That's the other piece that I wanted to acknowledge as well, is that this curriculum is going to be also developed with the community. We have members of the Racial Equity Alliance and the Racial Equity Council, members of the community that is very critical of this council, right? They've come here, they've spoken, they're engaged in various grassroots organizations that's going to be helping to also kind of co-develop this as well, which I think is very unique and very important. And just the last thing I want to share is that, you know, this work, even if you take the training, I still feel like it's not enough. This type of work is lifelong, right? It's not addressing racial equity in one month, a year, or only when it makes the news, and it's front and center, right? This is about showing up every day and really checking ourselves on ways that we're also contributing to the harm. And so really proud that we're taking this move and we're making it mandatory. I know before this began, it was more of an opt-in for the training, and I will share that, even though it was opt-in, some council members didn't take it, right? And so, you know, it was also the urgency of Councilmember Valenzuela, so I want to give her a shout out as well, saying, hey, this needs to be mandatory as well. And so with that push, you know, I was able to push it in the racial equity committee, and so wanted just to share that as well. But really hoping that we will get a unanimous yes, and so that we can begin in building that curriculum to do the training. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem Vang. And I, to that point, yes, I've taken the training, it's good to have it every two years and to have it reiterative so that it's updated with time. Madam Clerk, let's go to public comment, and then I have members of the public sign up to speak.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Of three speakers, the first is Lambert Davis, then Kay Blackman. Mr. Davis, if you'll unmute.
Yes, this is Lambert. Every time that I hear diversity, inclusion, and equity, it's starting to lose the meaning of what it says. Now, as I listen to the summary, I'm going to summarize what I heard. I heard, people don't have to take it mandatory. I also heard elected officials. Well, what if somebody's not elected, like the city manager? Why doesn't he have to mandatorily take it? Or anyone else that's not elected? Because that department has been caught in many scandals, a lot of racist scandals towards Black people, and yet they don't have to take the mandatory test. So that's irrelevant. I was at a hospital this weekend, and I went in an incubator area where a baby was born in our family, and there were different race babies in that incubator. And are you telling me those babies are born racist? I don't believe that. I believe they're taught that, and they're reinforced at city hall by being rewarded for doing that. You have to threaten people's jobs, and then you'll get some change. Otherwise, if you don't have to mandatorily take a test, why would you stop being racist? You're being rewarded every day. So that, I see a weak link in that armor, because you're not forcing people who were not elected to take those tests. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kay Blackman.
Good evening. My name is Kyra Blackman. The city of Sacramento's African American Employee Leadership Council, AAELC, Employee Resource Group, would like to express our appreciation of the resolution to mandate diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging training for all elected officials, their staff, and appointed officers to complete. We believe that it's imperative that the city adopts this resolution and are looking for elected officials to lead by example, and to then expand the mandatory requirement to all city employees in the very near future. We are interested in learning more about the plan, the implementation, and the benchmarking indicators that will measure the success of these trainings. Now is the time to create diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging change within the city of Sacramento from the top down of the organization. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Keon. And Keon is our final speaker on this item.
Hi, city council. Keon Bliss calling in as an individual from District Four, and really want to commend Councilmember Vang and others for taking a critical first step towards really confronting the culture of white supremacy that is literally permeates and rooted in every single facet of our policy from the top down. And it's really important to really understand that it is not something that, white supremacy is not just a natural occurrence, and oppression as a whole, white supremacy, cis hetero patriarchy, racial capitalism, it comes from the dominant cultures that be, which is typically coming from older white male property owners over the age of 21, which has been rooted since the founding of the United States. And we see this, and that's why I really want to lift up what previous commentators have said, that this can't just end with elected officials. Elected officials are just one facet of our governance system here in the United States that reinforces these oppressive cultures that we have all been raised with. And until it extends and is mandatory for all appointed officers, particularly the city manager, even the city clerks, as well as the chief of police, it is only going to go so far in order to do that. And it's really important that not just the policymakers that are required to undergo this training, but also those that administrate and enforce the policy are going into this. Because as it is right now, even the council rules of procedures that we are currently operating under, from council to all of its advisory bodies, are rooted within white supremacy, cis hetero patriarchal culture. And that, until those officers are required to go through this training and change, and that culture is rooted out, we're still going to be under these same rules, even if they're elected to do that.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate that. I also appreciate the second commenter pointing out that the requirement of this ordinance, if approved, would include appointed officials, that's charter officers and directors, and the staff associated with the elected officials. With that, I have got Councilmember Valenzuela and Councilmember Jennings on this. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. Really want to thank the entire racial equity committee, especially Mayor Protem Vang and Mayor Steinberg, for bringing this important item forward. You know, I've had the privilege of participating in a lot of implicit bias trainings, and when they talk about de-biasing, right, it's a lot about making the unconscious conscious. And I've never gone through one of these trainings, or read a book, or gone to a talk, and not left realizing something more about myself and my own perspective, my own experiences, and the experiences of those around me. And so it is, I'm really thankful for both the level of detail, but also the level of flexibility in this proposal, because it gives us that room to learn and to grow and to continue to evolve, because this is just one step of many steps to come around collecting better data, qualitative and quantitative data, right, creating systems of accountability when we do misstep. Because, as is often said, and one of my first implicit bias trainings, I remember this civil rights attorney sitting across from me and saying, like, it doesn't matter how well-intentioned this is. If it lands badly, if it hurts certain people more, it is a racist policy, it is a disparate policy, it doesn't matter. Like, not having the intention to do that doesn't remove that impact. And in order to acknowledge and recognize that, it requires that constant ebb and flow and growth. And we've had many conversations, I mean, I've been offline, like, I've talked to colleagues offline about the fact that we keep using phrases like grandfathering it. And I'm like, you know, that has its roots in Jim Crow South, that has its roots in disenfranchising Black Americans from voting, and so we need to be conscious of these, even small things like that, that someone who may be coming to their first council meeting hears that phrase and says, oh, this space isn't for me, because they don't obviously understand and appreciate, you know, my experience and my history in this country. So I think it's just so exciting to see us taking this step. And I would like to move the item, but I'd also love to reserve that for luxury for members of the committee who developed it. Just wanted to express my sincere appreciation. Someone who doesn't get to sit on the racial equity committee, I wish we all could. I think it would be really fun, meetings that we would have there. And just really wanted to express my support and enthusiasm for getting this started. So thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. I agree with you. It's great to serve on that committee. I was proud to also give my space to Councilmember Jennings. It was, I don't know.
I'll make a motion if you want a second.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Vang. Councilmember Jennings.
All right. Thank you so much. Ami, I just want to applaud you and your staff on the great work to get us to this critical first step to where we are today. This is going to be a best practice, it's going to be one that other governments will look at throughout the state and throughout the country. And I just want to really let you know how proud we are that you're leading this charge with the committee, working to make this happen and getting us to this critical first step. There was a lot of confusion as far as it being a top-down type process, and how does it get from elected officials to their staff and then on down? And I heard something that you said, and I just wanted you to explain it to make sure that everybody understands that the goal is to get this to all the city employees at some point in time. And you said a commitment to expand to all city employees. Either I read it, I heard it, or I wrote it down, thinking that's what I wanted to have happen. But I think I heard you say that, that the commitment is that this would get to all city employees, right? And we're going through that process, through this action plan, in order to make that happen. So I just want to let you expand on that a little bit more.
Well, thank you for that. And city manager, you can also help me out, too. My understanding is that for us to roll it out to all city staff, we do have to do a consult and confer with our representing employee organizations, so that takes time. However, what I think we can do is, and this would be the strategy, at least as our conversations evolve, is that we would look at them in alignment, building off the DEI and racial equity trainings that we've so far developed for staff, to see how that would extend to, in best practice, to elected officials. And that's something that you all are going to be very key in, we're going to have to have key conversations about that. I don't know what it's like to be a council member, and so in order to meet those needs and understand your learning and readiness and where you're at, I think we'd want to do a learning assessment, which is also a best practice in developing training of any sort, especially for adult learners. So building off the work that we've already done, we would want to create a timeline, and that timeline would be simultaneous. What would be for city staff, and then what would be for the implementation of electeds and their staff and appointed officers? So I think they can be done together, they just have different distinct paths, and that we would have to make sure that we're aligned. But they intersect at points, and we would want to leverage that, and then build from the consultation that we need to happen to implement for city staff, and then see where we can implement, probably, I'm imagining, sooner for the electeds. And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to move. When you're doing systems work, you want to go into where the points of entry are, there's least resistance, so that you can expand upon that. You can also learn to adapt and anticipate what other systems may need to come into play, what consultations would need to happen. We would want to do deep consultations with the city attorney's office as we roll it out for the city staff as well, the city manager. So that's what I'm seeing two going together, but eventually, there's going to be two paths for implementation, and one is going to take a little bit longer. But I would love to put a timeline for both, so that we have accountability and we understand how that path is moving forward.
Okay, city manager, did you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on that and put a finer point on it, actually. The previous caller was incorrect. This council, I applaud this council for making this training, this new training mandatory, because it's not. And with the vote of this resolution tonight, this council is saying that they want to make this, first off, for the elected officials sitting up here and the appointed charter officers. Beyond that, we're going to work on this timeline, on how we have these discussions with our labor partners to make this mandatory for them as well. So it's not, it's the exact opposite of what the caller was saying.
Thank you, city manager. Councilmember Jennings.
Yeah, just, you answered my question, and I appreciate that. And anytime you say a timeline or an action plan, there's always a timeline associated to an action plan, and there are target dates that you're trying to get to in order to complete the timeline. How can the public follow our action plan and the target timelines that we, how can they follow it so that they can see what's going on? And if you don't have the answer to that today, that's something we want to talk about, because I think it's very important for the public to see the progress that we're making and the steps that we're taking to get to all the goals that we have within the action plan. So.
Maybe with, Chair Gara, maybe with my motion, maybe I'll add something in my motion that maybe we have a report back or a report back memo back to the full council on a timeline, what we're thinking, what that may look like. I think that would be good, so why don't we add that?
If, Councilmember Valenzuela, you're okay with that admission into the motion?
That would be great. That way, we can also share that with the public of our timeline on the implementation of the mandatory training and just the parallel tracks that you're discussing about regarding city staff. So I think I'll add that to the motion, so we can have that back for public review.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Jennings, does that respond to your concern?
No, I just think this makes this totally transparent for the public, to be able to see exactly what we're doing and what our intent is. And I think it gives them a lot more confidence in the work that we're doing.
Thank you.
So again, thank you for your work.
Yeah. Let me bring this over to Councilmember Maple.
First of all, thank you, and I have just a quick, I guess, process question. So I know that we are in the process of beginning our labor negotiations with the various unions that represent our workers. Is this an appropriate time to broach the subject, knowing that with some of these union contracts, they're multiple years, right? So if we're, you know, going into a contract that's happening, you know, over the next several months, it's going to go for two or three years, I really would hate to wait two or three years longer before we have a conversation with our union partners about whether or not this is something that can be implemented. So just wanted to kind of put that out there, maybe this is a city manager question of, like, is this a good time to have that conversation?
Well, given the nature of the question, I think I'd be more comfortable having this conversation with the council offline.
Yeah.
May I offer?
Interesting. And I just wanted to.
Yes, Ami.
Thank you. I just wanted to offer in terms of that, I think also, the racial equity committee could be a great space, as well as for that report back and feedback loop as another point of accountability in addition to the council, and what we can develop in terms of aligning with the community-guided work website and page that we're developing for the racial equity committee, that could also be a point of public accountability as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ami. Yeah, and Mr. City Manager and Madam City Attorney, I think part of that with the last option for Councilmember Maple is ensuring that we're not negotiating outside of the bargaining table. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. There's been properly moved and seconded, and saying no further comments. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, measure passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move on to comments, questions, and AB 1234 reports from the city council. Any AB 1234 reports? And I'm going to start off with Councilmember Kaplan, because I know she has to leave early, and then I'll move on to Councilmember Valenzuela. Councilmember Kaplan.
So are we doing both AB 1234 and councilmember comments?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I'd like to make my AB 1234 report. I was part of several of my colleagues going to DC on the cap-to-cap trip to advocate, to get more dollars and more funding into our city. I was on the water and flood team and talking a lot about climate change, water banking, and how we continued the good work that both of our representatives, especially Representative Matsui, has brought in probably billions of dollars in for SAFCA and flood certification. Matsui, has brought in probably billions of dollars in for SAFCA and flood certification. Happy to meet with Representatives Matsui, Barra, as well as federal committee staff to, to talk about a lot of the endangered species and, and water stuff and flood stuff that we have going on. Is that good? Does that mean my, that means my, okay. First time I'm making an AB 1234 report.
No, that was more than normal, but yeah, yeah. The details are in the public record.
All right.
Okay.
And then, just, just a couple of quick items upcoming. This Friday is Cinco de Mayo, and Natomas is holding its first Cinco de Mayo party at Regency Community Park with face painting, family games, food vendors. We're having DJ Oasis, Carlos Candiya, who's the Sacramento Artist of the Year, as well as mariachi singers, from four to 7:30. So, come join us. And then, starting next, or Friday, May 12th, I'm going to, I'm piggybacking on what Councilmember Vang started, but I'm doing a Walk the Talk with Lisa around Regency Park, and I'll have a special guest with me each Friday. So, it's the second Friday mornings from nine to 10 at Regency Park. And then, the Natomas Farmers Market is back, starting on May 13th. It'll be 8:30 to 12:30, recurring every Saturday. And we're bringing back new free yoga in the park as well. So, come join us.
Great. Thank you very much. Next time, we'll, we'll ask for a PowerPoint with your AB 1234. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. I will also make a couple of 1234 reports. I was also on the cap-to-cap trip, unfortunately caught the lovely cold that I'm still getting over now, but was able to participate in some of the meetings and networking events, and really appreciated the opportunity. I think the most notable was when, as I mentioned, Councilmember Jennings and I took a 30-minute cab ride across town to make a meeting with the Federal Transit Administrator to advocate for RT. So, that was lovely. And before that, I was in New York City with our city team for the Nighttime Economies Conference with Sociable Cities. Our new Nighttime Economies manager arranged a whole team of us to go and learn from other cities about how they manage their nightlife. It was really cool and informative, and I've got a whole bunch of council proposals that are probably going to come out of that, including new ways that they tax people who don't live in the city but make money in the city, which I was like, oh, hey, we know about that. Anyways, lots of cool ideas coming out of both events. And then, wanted to make sure, as I'm sure people have seen, the Midtown Association, very busy. Wednesdays at 1:00 have started again. Second Saturday comes back in May. It'll be an all-day event. It's free. You can go to the farmers market in the morning and then see different art displays. They're expanding it to be more of all of Midtown and more inclusive of more of our art venues. So, I hope folks will go check that out with the fresh launch. And thanks, everybody on the city team, who I know has been working hard on that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. And I want to know how I get involved in this nighttime economy trip next time. Council, Mayor Pro Tem Vang.
Thanks, Chair Gerre. I, too, would like to make my AB 1234 report. I was also part of cap-to-cap trip with a few of my colleagues to really advocate for more resources for our region and for the city of Sacramento. In particular, I was part of the Food and Act Track. I had an opportunity to meet with the Undersecretary of USDA, Jenny Moffett, to really discuss the work that our city has done around our opera dollars, around food insecurity, but in particular, our Food Justice Task Force, which Councilmember Maple will now be co-chairing the task force with me. So, really excited about that. And so, just wanted to do the report out. And then additionally, just wanted to just do some announcement. We had originally had our town hall regarding sideshows in the community scheduled for this Thursday, but we have to reschedule it because a few speakers weren't able to make it. We want to make sure that we have all the speakers that needs to be at the event to address any concerns around sideshows. I know there's a lot of work that's been happening, a lot of tools that we're thinking about to address what's happening throughout our city. I know in District Seven, District Six, Five, in my district in particular, a sideshow has been a huge, we've seen it throughout our, our community and incredibly dangerous. And so, just want to let you all know that we are working on a new date. If you did RSVP, we will send you an email regarding the cancellation, but also let you know when the new date will be. And so, I wanted to make sure I share that with the community. Also, wanted to also share, you know, every Mondays, Mondays with Maya at the Pennell Community Center, nine, 9:00 AM in the morning, bring your walking shoes. And I'm always out there walking with our seniors. So, come join us. It's always really great. Our group is growing, started with only like three or four people, and now be about like 20-plus folks, walking in Metta View every Mondays at 9:00 AM. It's Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at the Pennell Community Center, but I'm there every Mondays for Mondays with Maya. And then, lastly, just want to give a big shout-out for this Thursday, the big day of giving. It is a big annual give, donate to organization that you love. I would say, give where your heart is. There's so many amazing grassroots community organizations that are doing the hard work every day, serving our babies, our elders, our seniors, our residents who are unhoused. So many amazing organizations, grassroots organization, fighting for our Sacramento babies and families. And it's a big day of giving. This is where we give lots, you know, give where your heart is, where to organization you believe in. And so, just wanted to put a plug for big day of giving that's happening this Thursday as well. So, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem Vang. Let me bring this over to Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I wanted to give my AB 1234 report and let you know that I was part of the Transportation and Public Safety Committees, had the opportunity to go to approximately 12 meetings. And I wanted to let everyone know that my trip was paid for through regional transit. It was a extremely good trip for us, in the fact that we have heard that we have been approved to bring back $45 million for transportation to the city of Sacramento. And so, I will follow up and get the details on that and report it out on that at a later time. But it is good news, and it shows that when we go and advocate, especially the amount of elected representatives that were there, all advocating for their cities, for their counties, for their region, it was very effective, and it has proven to be effective for many, many years. And so, glad to be a part of it. I've got two announcements I want to make. I've got an event that's going to happen in my district, District Seven, this Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00 PM at Garsha Bend Park on Parker Road. And this is not an, this event is not just for runners. It's a, an event that's full of family, food, fun, fitness. And the event is called Not Just for Runners 5K and One Mile Walk, Run, and Health Fair. And so, it's going to happen again from 9:00 to 3:00 PM. And if you'd like to get more information and come on out for a great time, go to the District Seven website, and you can see all the details about how you can participate. It's a free event, so we invite you to come out. And also, on this Saturday, the Land Park Volunteer Corporation will be celebrating their 100th Park Work Day, 100 days that they have worked in the park. That'll take place from 9:00 to, to noon. The Land Park Volunteer Group is a self-help community of volunteers and donors who care for the William Land Park. So, we're going to meet up behind Fairy Tale Town. We've got all the tools that you'll need. We ask you to bring your gloves and bring your energy. And for all who volunteer, there will be a barbecue lunch that will be free to you as well. So, we're going to work you hard, and then we're going to feed you well. So, come on out and have a great time, and thanks so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings, and also our SECOG Board Member Jennings and SECOG Board Member Vang for that advocacy. And also, thank you to the, all of the SECOG team for that great work to advocate at the federal level and bring back home the resources. Councilmember Loloie, and then Councilmember Maple.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Just wanted to make a quick announcement. This Friday the 6th, from 11:00 to 4:00, we have our own Kentucky Derby Party at the Horsemen Association, which is located at 3200 Longview Drive. There's going to be multiple contests, the Best Hat, silent auction, and a lot of activities for the kids. As I said, it's this Saturday from 11:00 to 4:00. So, I hope I see some of you out there. It's going to be fun, and it's going to be, hopefully, the weather's going to be nice. And we're going to have our own Kentucky Derby.
Are they going to have mint juleps? All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Loloie, Councilmember Maple, and then I'm going to go back to Councilmember Jennings.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, I do not have an AB 1234 report, but I would like to thank my colleagues who did go to cap-to-cap, who traveled across the nation to advocate for resources, for our city, for our region. I know many of us sit on regional boards. Turns out, I sit on, myself and Mayor Pro Tem Vang, sit on, on a great number of them. But, but it's good work. And so, just really, really thankful for your advocacy. I know, I know it's hard to take that time out of your life to go there and do that, but it, it's really important. As Councilmember Jennings just said, you were able to secure funding for the things that we need. So, grateful for you, and hopefully, I'll participate next year. I do have an announcement, though, and I want to say that this coming Friday and Saturday, so the May 5th and 6th, is Habitat for Humanities' 6th Annual Rock the Block in Oak Park. And so, this is a really amazing event. They bring together about 500 volunteers. They do home repairs, community projects, cleanups. One of my neighbors is actually getting her whole house electrified and painted and all of her landscaping done. It's one of the, one of the coolest programs that we have. And so, it is not too late to sign up to volunteer. So, if you are free on Friday or Saturday, you can go to habitatgreater sac.org to, to register to volunteer. And then, I just want to shout out the District Five team, Chief of Staff Ryan Brown, our District Director Michael Benjamin, and our Operations Manager Cassandra Soto. They are going to be volunteering on Friday to do that work. So, really grateful for them, and come on down. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Maple. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I spoke earlier today about a subject matter that was not on the agenda, and so, I asked, could I speak to it during the open session on items not on the agenda? And was told by legal counsel I could. And so, I just want, to all of our guests, all of our visitors, this is a business meeting, and we encourage you to come, and we want you to come. The reason I asked for a point of order earlier today was because one of the rules on the council rules and procedures was being violated. It was not being held. And so, I then asked legal counsel, how does the public know what our council rules and procedures are? And we did something about a year ago, maybe two years ago, where we actually put it on the speaker slip that you signed. And so, I would encourage you, if you're asking questions about what are the rules and procedures within the council, grab one of these sheets that you sign. Not only look on the front where you write your name and all the other information where you request to speak, but also look on the back, and it talks about purpose for public comments, general conduct, decorum in the chamber, addressing, tips for addressing the council, and then enforcement of decorum in the chamber. And I just think these are valuable information, because when I said point of order, you are never to talk directly to one council member. You're to speak to the council as a whole. And so, while I'm not pointing you out directly, I'm just trying to make sure that we educate the public as to how to operate within the chamber. And so, the, the information is here, and if you have any more questions on it, any of us would be more than happy to sit down and discuss that with you. If you think these are not fair, we can discuss that as well. But I just wanted to kind of go through where these rules come from and where you can find them.
And Councilmember Jennings, if I can add on to that, too, since you were interested in making sure the public knew where those rules could be found. Under the city charter, it actually requires a council to adopt rules, and the council's done so, including the, the manner in which members of the public can address the council. And the reason for that is because the purpose of the council meeting is to do the public's business first and primarily. This is the only place the council can act. The council cannot have meetings that are not agendized. You cannot have any discussion or decisions based on that. And so, this is the only way the council can actually act. And so, when the members of the public come up to speak and address you on items on the agenda, then it's important that you're able to get through that item and move on, and that's why you have time limits, and that's why you have rules that apply to how members interact with the council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jennings and City Attorney. Also, just one comment here. Again, Cinco de Mayo is coming up. I want to remind folks that is not Mexican Independence Day. It's La Batalla de Puebla, and a great holiday. And there is some rootedness in California at the time of the Californios, and when the Emperor of France invaded Mexico, it was the Californios here who were hosting fiestas patroficas, or patriotic parties, to raise money to help the, the workers who were, the, and, and community members down in, in Puebla and other parts of Mexico to support them in that effort. And so, so there is some history into partying, but it's about supporting the working people there. So, with that, again, it's about, and if you want to learn more, Dr. David Hayes-Bautista has a great book called El Cinco de Mayo, An American Tradition. With that, Madam Clerk, let's move on to council comments here.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have seven speakers. The first is Ryan Misano, then O, then MVW.
The purpose of free speech is so we listen to ideas we hate to listen to. Now, if you don't like the truth I'm saying, and a lot of people don't, then you could put earplugs in your ears, or you can leave. But you cannot interrupt other people from hearing that as well. And there are people from around the world that are listening to this, in every nation on this earth. You may think there's a few people here. The last thing that happened at City Hall got 50,000 views. There are people who are watching this, and they will be coming one day. And what's going to happen is, if anyone could take my right to free speech away, they could take everyone in here's right to free speech away. So, if we all don't have free speech, that's what city council meetings are for. So, we can all come and express ideas that strongly differ and respectfully listen. Now, I didn't turn my back on any of you, not you, not anybody. I sat and respectfully listened to what you had to say. I disagree with a lot of it. But you know what I don't do? I don't rudely attack you. I don't call you hateful and a bigot. I don't, I don't do all of that. I sit and I patiently listen. You know why? Because if I'm right, then I should be able to talk and have a conversation and convince you of my viewpoint. And if you're right, then I can learn. So, either way, if we can actually sit and patiently listen and not interrupt each other, we could, there's no losing to this. So, and I appreciate what Councilmember Jennings said, and, and that's not only here, that's in many city councils that that's been done. There's, there's a group of people who do this. So, there is no exception in the First Amendment for anything, for free speech. The Supreme Court in TAM established that there is no exception for hate speech. So, the, a common tactic of people in power is to say that people who, who disagree with them are hateful, and that you have to silence them. But if you do that, then every single person in here, at one point or another, can be silenced. And I don't think any of us in here want that. So, I'm here to tell the truth, that I see it. Now, if you disagree with me, that's fine. I'd like to hear your viewpoint. Some people won't sit down with me. There's no one in here I won't sit down with. But I know there's people in here who will not sit down with me.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the.
Our next speaker is O, then MVW.
Last city council meeting, I attempted to speak about an incident that occurred at a crime scene on April 6th in District Two before I was cut off. I stood there and watched your SACPD officers make jokes, laugh, and have smiles on their faces while they cleaned up a crime scene. Prior to this, a SACPD officer approached residents at Camp Resolution, sharing that someone was whacked up on the bike trail, and asked folks if, if they saw anyone come inside with a machete. Last meeting, I stated that we asked Crystal Sanchez, President of the Sacramento Homeless Union, how many unhoused women have been found dead. She shared this. The Camp Resolution community is saying six. I know of at least four for sure. And prior weeks before that, they found anywhere from seven to 15 bodies at Roseville Road. Road. She also told us that she reached out to SAC PD, and they refused to call her back. She shared that some of the situations are the same, dismemberment and burning of women like Roseville Road. Yet, as of today, I saw that residents of Roseville Road are being actively swept, and the sweep is being enforced by your SAC PD. After this was presented to you during the last city hall meeting, the union attempted to share information about the murders with SAC PD, and they blatantly disregarded it. And then you wonder why your police lacks trust in the community, and why unhoused residents wouldn't feel safe coming forward about the murders happening. How can you expect them to trust the same entity that's sweeping them? Where is your humanity? Where is your compassion? Because we don't see it, and I highly doubt any amount of diversity training will change that. I dare you all to come out and witness one of the sweeps, so y'all can see firsthand how your decisions and how your votes directly impact and harm our most vulnerable marginalized community. We are demanding a moratorium on all sweeps. SAC PD is not out here solving crimes, but they are out here actively sweeping people and putting them in further danger with a smile on their faces while there are bodies of murdered unhoused women being found in your city. A few council meetings ago, Howard Chan said he felt uncomfortable waiting two weeks to purchase SAC PD new vest that cost thousands of dollars.
Comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is MVW, then Samuel. Thank you for your comments.
I wish breathing people made you feel uncomfortable.
Your comments are complete. MVW, please come and give your time.
I wish breathing people made you all feel uncomfortable. I wish unhoused...
Your comments are complete.
I wish police...
We're going to have MVW come out.
I wish police...
Okay.
Our next speaker is MVW, then Samuel.
If MVW is not here to present, we'll move on. We'll move on to the next person.
Samuel, then Samuel.
MVW, would you like to comment?
I don't allow people to yield their time.
Thank you.
But it's our chambers, right? Tomorrow, during the Compensation Committee, these lovely people in front of you will talk about their own salaries. They will be able to figure out how much their pay increases should go up, how much each member should have. And so I have something here. This was from a couple of years ago, but it's so important to show that...you can zoom in. It's so important to show that over 30% of the budget, now it's more around 40% of the budget, is spent on just the police department alone. That's $221.7 million. You guys, today, I can't even say how many times you guys said, "We don't have the resources. Our resources are low. Our resources are just..." All this stuff. But yet, the pie chart doesn't lie. Doesn't make any sense. You guys have the money. You're giving it to your police department and to your fire department. I don't know if you guys read the news, or, you know, maybe you guys just have little Twitter fingers like Trump. But a lot is happening in your city with your fire department. A lot is happening in your city with your police department. Today is Week 10. We've been sitting on this side for 10 weeks in a row. 10 weeks. We have eight demands that we have joined forces with Decarcerate Memphis, the city that Tyree Nichols was killed in. They have been able to pass with their city council two separate ordinances. One, a Data Transparency Ordinance. The second one is not allowing any unmarked vehicles, unmarked police cars, to be on their streets. What the fuck are you guys doing? You're not doing anything. You allow the police to walk all over you. Howard Chan, you act like everybody's boss, but aren't we all your boss? Why does that man make more money than the President of the United States? When you go tomorrow to your Compensation Committee...
Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Samuel. Next speaker is Samuel, then Grant William.
Your time is complete. We'll have Samuel, if you'd like to speak.
You are at someone's...
You have exceeded your time. Madam Clerk, please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Samuel, then Grant William, then SAC City resident.
Good afternoon, city council members. Vice Mayor, my name is Samuel. My pronouns are they/them. As Week 10 of community members begin bringing to the table our list of demands to the council, demands that would significantly help reduce the harm, violence, and murders of Black and Brown communities, demanding the people in power upholding the systems in place that disproportionately affect the most marginalized communities to listen to our voices. I find it interesting that you care more about decorum than the voices of hurting people in your districts, in contrast to how you allow individuals to stand up here and spew hate speech. You say there's no room for hate here while allowing white supremacist Nazis to come up to this podium and speak. But you say there's no room for hate here, right? I urge you to think about what performative action looks like amongst your council.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Grant William, then SAC City resident. And then I have one speaker online.
I want you guys to pay attention to this video that happened, I found. All of you guys. This is my first time at the council. I know you guys have probably talked about me behind closed doors and all that. Okay?
Hold on.
City Attorney, whoever, I just want to know if you guys took a good look at this appeal. Okay? Take a good look at this appeal. Okay? Take a good look at this video of me being kidnapped by your police officers, okay? This is real. Take a good look at this video of your police officers looking at a ghost gun and act like they did not see it. Look at this video, okay? I want you guys to understand what I am going through. I'm a human being, okay? Now, I had just heard this thing about somebody, women are being killed. Man, that's fucked up. Y'all probably know about that shit because y'all probably doing it.
That's right.
That's real motherfucking talk. I wasn't going to cuss when I come up here. Look, y'all been watching me, okay? You guys just watched me with some beautiful, diverse kids win a trophy. Y'all was watching me through a microscope do that. I didn't teach them kids basket...I didn't teach them kids how to shoot a gun. I taught them how to shoot a basketball. You know what I'm saying? A beautiful, diverse group of children, which my grandson was a part of. And you guys...I'm scared for him, because you guys have been harassing me, even when he's in the car with me, calling me all kind of inwards and things of that. Ms. Susan Woods, I want you to look at this, and I want you...I want this to be moved on with. I want you guys to do your jobs and quit...and quit...quit...stop your police officers putting brownies on on human beings, because I have the proof on my phone that you guys have a bounty out of my life. Challenge me on that, please. I'm real serious, because you guys are trying to kill me for what I have on my phone. You guys are just equally responsible for the sexual harassment, you men. I'm finished. I'm finna go home and smoke some weed. That's what I'm finna do.
Next speaker is...
I'll be back, dawg.
Next speaker is SAC City resident.
I'll take this. Keep fighting.
Do we have SAC City residents? I don't see them. So our final speaker is Lambert Davis online.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, this is Lambert, and I have a couple of concerns. First of all, the famous Grant Drumline, which I'm a tremendous advocate for. Recently, I spoke with them to see what was the status of their trip to Europe, which has been verbally endorsed in the chamber. Shout out to Mayor Steinberg. Over the years, he's been a supporter of theirs, and I've heard Mr. Loloey, too. However, they are having problems with the deficit. And I am going to ask them, and then I'm going to come back to this chamber and get clarity. I want to know how much money has come out of the city manager's office. In the city manager's office, there's five divisions. Several of them help the youth. These are teenagers in an underserved community that bring tremendous popular accolades and the claims for the city of Sacramento. Of course, Grant High School, but the city of Sacramento gets coverage. You can't put a dollar amount on that. And I'm disturbed that there's a delay of helping these young people go where they need to go. There's been enough scandals in the city manager's office where there should be enough money to help these young people, and we're going to stay focused on it. Because I saw a lot of excitement when they were giving awards out and acknowledging the Asian community, and I have a lot of Asian friends in Del Paso Heights, mainly moms. And I want to see that same enthusiasm from the city manager's office.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your comments, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank everyone for their comments, the staff for their work, the public, and my colleagues. We will adjourn the meeting here at 7:23 PM. We'll see you next week.